Council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Here.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Here.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli? Counselor Spatafora? Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President O'Malley?
Here. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA Urban Media Arts will be recording this evening's meetings, so please be aware there will be audio and video recordings of this meeting. First order of business.
Public comment? We have no one signed up.
So yeah, so under public comment, so no one, no one, we are also gonna, and actually this is a good note, we're also gonna have a hearing tonight on the charter, so, you know, anyone who might have wanted to speak at public comment about the charter, we would ask that you speak at the hearing, and we have nothing written in? Great. We have a consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, one appointment to be referred to the personnel committee, 21 petitions to be referred to license, oh, license is busy, and three papers to be referred to ordinance and/or finance. Does any council have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, second.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Semenelli, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So we're gonna do the next order of business, which is hearings, petitions, memorials, and remonstrances.
The City Council will hold a public hearing regarding a home rule petition process to repeal sections 16, 20, 21, 23A, 23C, 23D, 23F, 23G, and 32 of the Malden City Charter. If passed, these repealed sections from the charter will be incorporated within the following chapters of the city ordinances, MCC 2.12, 2.16, 9.16, and 11.
Thank you. So I will declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. So if anyone would like to speak in favor of the charter amendments, would any counselors like to speak in favor of the charter amendments? Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, I will also do it in the committee report, so, but yeah, I know we've spent, you know, upwards of actually seven years working on these charter amendments, and I think it's, you know, I know originally we were looking at doing a wholesale new charter, and out of the work last year, we decided that it was more straightforward to really just strike some sections and work on improving those, the organization of the city and the ordinances, and that's really what we've done. I think it's, I appreciate all the good work here, I think it's updating our charter so that we have, you know, it reflects more of what we're doing and what we will be doing, and, you know, striking the sections really rids us of a lot of antiquated provisions in the charter, that some of them are upwards of 100 years old, or, and so that's, I just really encourage, I did, you know, there's a memo that I prepared back, you know, in November when Ron Hogan presented the concept, you know, that had focused on the police, fire, public works, and traffic commission, because we expanded that because of the changes in building inspections and health, I updated a new memo really explaining, you know, what provisions we're striking and what ordinances are being, you know, replacing those provisions. So there's that memo that was included in the package. So I think we've done a lot of thorough work, I really want to thank Ron Hogan, Carol Ann for all that effort, and the community members in rules and ordinance and charter, that we've done a lot of good work, and this is a great step forward, so I really am supportive of us, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. I'm gonna just make sure that the record reflects that at 7:13 Counselor Spatafora joined us online. Also, any votes tonight going forward will be done via roll call, so that Counselor Spatafora can participate fully. Counselor Semenelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just want to echo my colleagues, regards, there was a lot of work put into this charter review paper, and, you know, he doesn't give himself enough credit, but Counselor Winslow really has done a fine job, stayed on top of this, I've been on the council now back here for three years, and he's been nonstop on it, even makes sure he calls me before the meeting starts to make sure I'm gonna be there, so we can get this material moving forward, so, you know, I like to just take my hat off to him, because he's worked very hard and diligently on this paper. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Semenelli. And just Counselor Spatafora, we just opened up the public hearing to speak in favor, no members of the public have spoken in favor, but we've had two members of the council speak in favor. So I'm gonna see if there's anyone else who would like to speak in favor. Hearing and seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Would anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition to change the charter, please come forward and state your name and address for the record? Do we have anything in opposition in writing?
Yes, we do have one letter submitted this afternoon by the Friends of the Felsmere Heights, and I will read it into the record. This is addressed to the Malden City Council and Council President Ryan O'Malley regarding the proposed changes to the Malden City Charter and related ordinances. Dear President O'Malley and City Council members, this letter covers two broad subjects: the content of the proposed changes to the city charter and city ordinances, and the process by which citizen input is being solicited. Proposed charter changes and related ordinances. Friends of the Felsmere Heights urges the City Council to modify the current proposed deletion of entire sections of the city charter and the creation of organizations only in city ordinances. Specifically, we recommend the following: leaving the existence of certain organizations in the charter with details in the ordinances; updating or adding organization names in the charter with details in the ordinances, for example, changing the traffic commission to the transportation commission in the charter and removing details that should be in the ordinances; and retaining or including in the charter important historical information such as the dates when a commission or department was first chartered, or its purpose updated. Such changes will serve important functions. The charter will preserve the existence of the named part of Malden's governance, which could otherwise be legislated away by future city council vote. Authorizations given to Malden by the legislature will be retained, and the history of Malden's civic identity, of which we are all justly proud, will be preserved in our central civic document. In our opinion, a home rule petition that retains the basic structure of governance in this way will be more likely to win the approval of the Commonwealth's Legislature. With regard to the city's authority and responsibilities, matters such as adding parking meters in off-street parking lots, creating senior citizen safety zones, or obtaining the use of holdings and revenue of the stadium and athletic field commission, which are in the charter, are not in the proposed ordinances. While these and other missing city responsibilities may be addressed after the charter changes are made and the new ordinances are livened, there is no way to be sure that this will be done in a timely manner. As it is, a careful legal review of the proposed changes and the ordinances compared to the charter is needed insured, excuse me, is needed to ensure that there are no lapses in the city's authority and responsibilities, and citizen input process for proposed charter and ordinance changes. The Friends of the Felsmere Heights takes issue with the process used by the city for public review of the proposed changes to the city charter and the related changes to the city ordinances. Their proposed home rule petition states that the city has, quote, "received freely expressed input from the public by way of public meetings, various forums, and from working groups," unquote. But the public hearing of April 29, 2025, is the only meeting called for this purpose. While the meetings of both the Rules and Ordinance Committee and the City Council are public, they do not provide a venue for, quote, "freely expressed public opinion," unquote, and are neither forums nor working groups. By contrast, Malden's open space process used surveys, public events, and a raffle to ensure public input, while this reorganization of the city government is receiving a single public hearing as part of a city council meeting. While matters such as open space and public art may be more, may be of more obvious public interest, we believe that the supposedly mundane details of traffic design, road maintenance, and park upkeep are of at least equal importance to residents' quality of life and deserve equivalent concern for public input. Accordingly, we urge the council to proceed carefully before ordaining the proposed ordinances or submitting the proposed home rule petition to the legislature. With respect, Friends of the Felsmere Heights Board.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Hearing none and seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Counselor Winslow, I believe you've already kind of given your report on this, so I think we'll take up the next order of business.
Under enrolled ordinances, Paper 443-24, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden, MCC, is hereby amended as noted in the body of said paper, effective upon the successful passage of a home rule petition approving corresponding amendments to the city charter.
On Counselor Winslow's motion, oh, Counselor Winslow for the paper.
So as you recall, back in March, actually, we went and reviewed the proposal that came out of rules and ordinance for these ordinances, and we voted on various amendments. So one of the things, I appreciate our city clerk, Carol Ann Disidario, did was she then took that paper and with the amendments, and she did prepare a final clean version, which I think everybody should have had before you. So there was some question, I know the Friends of the Fels raised about, you know, did this council have a clean version? And one of the things I explained, you know, is that sometimes you hear at the legislative level, they have something called the three readings. So typically for us, we have that same process, kind of the first reading or presentation of a paper is when it's first on the agenda and it gets referred or acted on. The second thing is when, second sort of reading is when we enroll something, so that way, when we have a paper coming out of committee that's recommended, we make those amendments, and that, once we make those amendments and vote on an amendment paper, that's enrolled. One reason why we have this ordination process is to make sure that the final paper that we vote on reflects the amendments that we made during enrollment. So that is something that Carol Ann worked on diligently after, you know, this paper was enrolled, and that paper was, you know, put in the agenda and is, you know, on the legisstar, and you should have that in your package. So what we're voting on this package, I mean, as you remember, on the April 15 meeting, we voted on some, we expedited the ordinance amendments related to the building inspectional services and health department and services, so we already voted on those. This is the ones that were really related to the November thing that related the fire, police, public works, engineering, and traffic commission. So this is really just the initial set of ordinances that were proposed. So that's what we'll be voting on. I could say the committee recommended these, and we had already voted on amendments. Those amendments are now reflected in what is, what we're voting on to be ordained, so that's just, I'd make a motion that we, you know, ordain these, and they will be subject to the passage of the home rule petition, so yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Any discussion on the ordainment of the enrolled ordinances? Hearing and seeing none, is there a second to Counselor, Counselor Winslow's motion was seconded by Counselor Sika? So a yes vote would ordain or take final action on the proposed ordinances, which will take effect upon the legislature's positive or approval of our home rule petition. A no vote would not ordain. With that, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli?
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora? Oh. He's not muted. But we can't hear him.
Try it one more time?
Can you hear me? You guys can't hear me.
I'm not hearing you, sorry. Oh, wait, hold on, let's try this. Try it now?
Yes. Hmm.
One more? Try it one more time?
Yes.
No. Yeah, if you could do a thumbs up, okay. Counselor Spatafora has voted yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President O'Malley?
Yes.
That passes 11 to 0.
Is that your idea? Yeah, that was your idea. It's all right.
The people can hear him at home, but we can't hear him.
The next order of business is committee reports.
Paper 218-25, committee report. The Standing Committee on Charter Review to whom was referred Paper 418, series of 2024, having considered the same, make the following report. Number one, under the authority of Paper 418-24 to develop a home rule petition as needed to modify the city charter, committee represents newly written Paper 219-25 as the product of that task and recommends Paper 418-24 be placed on file. And number two, committee represents Paper 219, series of 2025, as drafted by the legal department with the following recommendation.
Counselor, Counselor Winslow's motion to accept the committee report, seconded by Counselor Semenelli, all those in favor, please, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli?
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora?
We're gonna try you a couple times, we got a couple different options. Can you try again?
Yes, yes, you guys can't hear me? I can hear you fine.
Yeah, that's, sorry, Counselor Spatafora, I don't know what to do.
He gave a thumbs up.
Counselor Spatafora voted yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President O'Malley?
Yes. Counselor Winslow for the paper. Oh, the clerk is gonna read the papers.
Paper 418-24, communication. The mayor's office and the council president request that the charter review committee meet to review a proposal to draft a home rule petition to modify the city charter and develop city ordinance amendments necessary to: one, remove certain city charter language concerning the public works and stadium commissions, and enact an ordinance establishing a parks and recreation commission; two, remove city charter language establishing the public works commission and public works and engineering departments, and enact an ordinance establishing authorities and responsibilities for such commission and departments; three, remove city charter language concerning the police and fire departments and enact an ordinance establishing authorities and responsibilities for such departments; and four, to remove city charter language regarding the traffic commission and to establish a transportation commission by ordinance. And, do you want me to just read the other one, too?
Yeah. Yeah, would you?
Okay. And Paper 219-25 ordered that the city submits to the Massachusetts Legislature for passage and act striking certain provisions of the charter of the City of Malden.
Counselor Winslow for the committee.
Yes, so related to Paper 418-24, the committee reported out that paper without any recommendation, just asked it to be placed on file. So this was basically the memorandum that Mr. Hogan initially prepared outlining the proposed changes and some language, so this is kind of what we worked off and had meetings last year when I was council president, and so there's, this paper was the paper, but we're not actually, we, you know, we just enrolled, I mean, ordained the ordinances that came out of that work, so this paper can just be put on file, so just make a motion to put this paper on file.
And just to confirm, this is 418-24?
418-24.
So on Counselor Winslow's motion to place Paper 418-24 on file, seconded by Counselor Semenelli, a yes vote will place this on file, a no vote will not. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli?
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora?
Yes.
You have to do a thumbs up.
Gave a thumbs up.
Counselor?
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yes. I don't know either. Counselor Winslow for the next paper.
So, so the Charter Review Committee met this afternoon and reviewed the updated April 9 version of the home rule petition that Attorney Rumley prepared for the solicitor's office. We considered that along with the comments from the Friends of the Felsmere Heights, and we did recommend that out favorably with one amendment to the third whereas paragraph by, to add at the end of that paragraph, just to say that, have that ultimately read. Whereas, to address these issues, the mayor and city council worked jointly to propose a strengthened and modernized charter without diminishing the powers vested in the city by the legislature. So that is the recommendation of the committee, and then I'll explain a little bit about what we did in terms of looking at the Friends of the Fels letter. So we did, you know, in relation to the comment about leaving, you know, certain parts of the organization and charter and references to historic, you know, provisions in the legislation, we talked about that in committee. I think the general thought was that, that, you know, just having a title with no language in it really doesn't significantly protect the interest that the public would have, that that would really preserve anything, I mean, it'd just be an empty thing, so it's really important that, you know, I think we focus on the ordinances and preserving those, so I don't think that was anything. And then we thought, related to the historical thing, it would be simple enough in terms of when we, you know, the new version of the charter is posted, there could always be a link to the old version of the charter, the 2018 version that was developed that will preserve all that information and make it readily accessible. So I think in this kind of modern era, that's probably the appropriate way to go. In terms of, you know, legislating away, I mean, just having blank sections in the charter, I mean, we've, there's, there's nothing preventing the future city council and mayor just to blank out the ordinance as well, so I don't think that just having titles works there. We did look at the comments about, you know, what authorizations might be in the current charter, that, you know, are those really being carried forward? And Attorney Zahir, he did speak with the solicitor's office and through Mark Rumley. They, we, the legal office actually did do that type of review, and the solicitor has concluded that there's no really significant authorities that are being dropped during this transition. I mean, just to point out things like, related to, you know, installing parking meters in off-street parking lots, right now, we don't even have any parking meters like that, so that's just really an antiquated provision, and the Transportation Commission will have authority over parking meters and rates and that type of thing. You know, there was a mention about senior safety zones, you know, that's just based on some of my knowledge of that, you know, Representative Fallon at the time worked to get that language adopted, because under state law, the city could not adopt something like that, but now with updates to state law, we actually can do safety zones around not only senior buildings, but schools and parks, so we have all the authority under state law to do what that charter provision does, and so, and, you know, I think, so basically, the legal office did do that analysis, and then, you know, that, so I think any really substantive legal thing we have, has been considered, we don't, the opinion is that the change from having things in the charter, having things in that we've just, in the ordinances, we've, you know, tentatively ordained, you know, will be carried forward, so I think that part of the, you know, comments are, you know, just related to the process. I mean, I just point out to the fact that, I mean, we, the council's been working on updating the charter since 2017, I mean, and give great credit to, you know, the late, great city clerk Karen Anderson in the committee at that time. The first thing is, I don't know if you ever remember, back before 2018, when you would go in to ask about the charter, you had to sit down with Karen, and she'd have this big binder of, you know, miscellaneous changes that were not coherent, and so the fact the first version was, the first effort was just to come up with a coherent version of the charter, and we enacted that in 2018, and that just really showed how antiquated, you know, the 1881 version of the charter was, and really drove the next step. And so I think that since that time, we, you know, we did, initially, the mayor's office proposed the wholesale changes, doing the kind of administrative order, eliminating any reference to any committees or commissions or departments in the charter. I think we struggled with that, and we decided, you know, earlier last year that that was not going forward on the mayor's office, and then, you know, as came up with this idea of being more limited changes, and, you know, that was, you know, people had opportunity to comment in November, you know, so the charter's been discussed a lot, and I think particularly, I think, you know, one of the things I noted back in 2017, during that open space and rec process, there was a call for Parks Commission. It's been something that's been on people's minds since then, and I appreciate the mayor and pro- It's been something that's been on people's minds since then, and I appreciate the Mayor in proposing this stuff has proposed that significant change. We actually will have a Parks Commission. So I think it is the thing, I think that ultimately, I think the committee voted in favor because, you know, now's the moment. We put in a lot of work. We're gonna make imme- significant, um, updates and, and make, you know, rid ourselves of antiquated languages that don't reflect what we're doing right now. But with something like the Park Commission gives us the opportunity to work on new things. So that was really, um, you know, so we did look at what the, um, Friends of the Fels put out there and carefully considered that. And, you know, besides that, there, you know, the comment, um, you know, was that maybe we just gotta make sure that, you know, maybe there's something that in the, the Charter that we didn't really intend to drop out, and, you know, that, um, we did add in that whereas clause, saying our intention is not to, if there was something significant in the former Charter that, um, we thought we should have powers that the legislature granted us, that we're not planning that that's dropped. It's just that those p- powers are being transferred from some committee we, or commission we have eliminated to the City Council itself. So, or, and through, and we're, through the ordinances, we're distributing that power. But if there's something we've missed, they, we reserve the right to, to do that. So I think that's, you know, why the committee, you know, voted to recommend favorably for the Home Rule Petition with that one modification. So, um, so that's the committee report. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Uh, any questions on the Home Rule Petition from the council? From the chair, I just wanna thank the work of the Charter Committee. Um, I wanna thank the, the administration and the Mayor's Office, uh, Ron Hogan, Maria Louise, and the entire team that helped work on this. You know, I think that we really did try to make common sense changes of what allows us to be nimble. Um, you know, and to, to, to some of the concerns that you ra- that had been raised. You know, if, if, if we have a Parks Commission, but it never gets appointed, then, you know, what, what is, what is the good of that? But if we now have a Parks Commission in the ordinance and we're, we're appointing it, um, I think it actually shows, uh, that, you know, the City Council and, and the administration and, and the Mayor are, are listening and working and, and, and implementing, uh, the desires of, of the public. So with that, um...
So I guess the first thing I do have to do is make a motion to amend the paper um, so that we include that language in the whereas clause. So my motion would be that we amend the third whereas clause to add the language, um, without diminishing the powers vested in the city by the legislature.
So on Counselor Winslow's motion to amend the paper pursuant to the recommendation of the Charter, uh, Commission or Committee, uh, which would, again, add that, um, s- clause to the end of the third paragraph. All the, uh, a yes vote would make the amendment, a no vote would not. All those, the clerk will call the roll.
Wait, second.
Seconded by Counsel Crowe, and the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Gave a thumbs up. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Yes.
That amendment was unanimous? On Counsel Winslow.
So, so to make a motion that we, um, uh, vote in favor of the Home Rule Petition as amended.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Crowe. Any discussion on the motion to recommend, do we know what the formal language is?
So we would adopt the Home Rule Petition?
To adopt the, to adopt the Home Rule Petition and send this to the legislature?
Yes.
Again, the, it is ordered that the city submits to the Massachusetts Legislature for Passage, enact striking certain provisions of the Charter of the City of Malden. A yes vote would adopt this order, a no vote would not. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Thumbs up. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes, that has passed unanimously.
Give yourselves a hand, everybody.
Just, at least, if we can't, at least we know they can.
Yeah, and just for the record, uh, we can see Counsel Spatafora voting with, uh, his hand. It's, uh, we'd say this is maybe modified American Sign Language of a thumbs up. And, uh, the people at home can hear him. They're very lucky. And we are, you know, at a detriment, but we can see how he is voting. Um, and I, I believe that that is gonna be a valid vote. Taking a chance here on the Charter, huh? Uh, but yes, um, we, we thank you and everyone who put in this hard work. We're gonna take up the next order of business. Uh, Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, uh, so I know, I believe Morgan has basically the final paper that people can sign off on, so it'd just be good for us, and she'll catch up with Counsel Spatafora. So, we actually, um, the legislature looks for every counselor to sign the paper, and then that gets forwarded to the mayor to sign. So they're looking for something unusual. Normally, it's just the, the council president and the clerk and the mayor sign papers, but the whole council signs this paper. Thank you.
Paper 220-25, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments, to whom is referred Paper 151, Series of 2025. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends this appointment out favorably to the full council.
Uh, Counselor Linehan's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor Taylor. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Gave a, gave a thumbs up. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes, that has been received unanimously. Counselor Linehan for the committee.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had a lovely meeting with, um, Emmanuel Marsh last week, or week before last. All good?
Can you read the paper? Just read, read the...
Uh, Paper 151-25, Mayoral Appointment. Emmanuel Marsh, 65 Wentworth Street, as a member of the Malden Housing Authority Board, said term to commence upon confirmation by the City Council and to expire March 19th, 2030. All good?
Thank you.
Okay. Got to do things by the book. Um, so a couple of weeks ago, we had a fantastic meeting with Emmanuel Marsh, who of course is a local attorney. Um, we discussed a little bit about what the Malden Housing Authority Board does. It's actually a pretty robust group. There's a lot of homework to be done. Um, and of course, the Housing Authority, you know, with federal funding being what it is, is gonna have some challenging times ahead. Um, I think that Emmanuel is just the right person to be appointed to this board when we have some hard discussions coming up and some, um, you know, just bil- older aging buildings and tenants that are gonna need support and buildings that are gonna need a lot of investment. So, we were unanimous in, um, uh, voting to put forth Emmanuel for this appointment. And I would like to make a motion to approve him.
We, we have lots of seconds. I'm gonna go with Counsel Condon as, as, as the Ward Two Counselor. Counselor, I mean, uh, uh, Mr. Marsh is a Ward Two resident. Uh, any discussion on this appointment? I see none on, on the motion to, um, confirm this appointment. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli. Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Gave a thumbs up. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. That confirmation is unanimous. Congratulations to Mr. Marsh.
Next order of business, Paper 221-25, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom is referred Papers 168, 169, 170, and 174, Series of 2025. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee re- recommends these papers out favorably to the full council.
On Counsel McDonald's motion to receive the committee report, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Semenelli. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
He voted yes.
Yes.
Gave a thumbs up.
Yep, yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Ca- Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
And Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes, the clerk will read the paper.
Paper 168-25, Order That $17 Million Is Appropriated To Pay Costs Of Designing And Replacing Lead Water Service Lines Throughout The City, Including The Payment Of All Costs Incidental And Related There Too. And to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with approval of the Mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter 44, Section 8.5, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. All or any portion of this amount may borrowed, may be borrowed through the Massachusetts Water Resources, Resources Authorities Lead Service Line Replacement Program. And the Mayor and any other appropriate officials of the city are authorized to execute and deliver any agreements or other documents in connection therewith. Paper 169-25. Separately, okay.
So, we're gonna do this separately? So on Counselor, uh, oh, Counselor McDonald for the paper.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to address these separately because they actually are separate, um, projects. And, so this paper, this is a big sum of money, and I'm really glad to see it before us. You all may remember that in December, our City Engineer, Yemleth, who I think is, was here a minute ago, I'm sure will be available if we need him, um, came to talk to us about how many remaining lead service lines, so residential lead pipes, there are in Malden. Malden is the, uh, second or third, uh, highest number of lead lines in the Commonwealth. So I think we are actually just higher than Boston, um, and quite a bit lower than Medford. But we have been working diligently since, uh, we had a consent order negotiated with the state in 2017 to remove a certain number every year. And we were on track to maybe 2037 getting them all done. Well, the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority has encouraged, asked us to speed that up, to help them with their overall infrastructure needs, and they've made new resources available, including this particular loan program that's listed here. And so, they are providing zero-interest 10-year loans that have at least a 25% forgiveness. So it's an incredible deal. Uh, and the, the terms of the program are that you have to remove the full available lead pipe. Folks may know that lead service lines or residential lead pipes have two parts. They have a public part and a private part. And it just stops at the property line, basically. And we have, now that we've inventoried all of our lead service lines, we know there are places where both need to be replaced. Maybe one, maybe the other. Um, it's not at all recommended that you just replace one piece anymore because it can actually cause other types of disruptions to the line that will increase the amount of lead that goes through. So you gotta pull the whole thing. So it's a, it's a, it's a term of the program that we pay for both the pi- the private and public side, which is the first time that we've done that for all users who need it. And so, this is estimated to remove the alm- this is the cost, that it's estimated to remove the almost 2,700 remaining lead service lines in Malden by 2032, which is the target date given to us by the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, which is where we get our water, right? This is the Quabon Reservoir. And so, the, I just really am glad to see the long-term planning that the Mayor is putting forward here in this proposal. This is another one of these papers that, while it is under my name, is not my proposal. It's from, uh, under state law, only the Mayor can propose spending money. So this is borrowing against the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund in order to make these changes, um, in the coming years, under some great terms. And so we had a good discussion about this in the Finance Committee. There's huge amounts of community support. Uh, and I think that the, it's important that we pass this tonight to stay, to help the city stay on track with the grant application. My understanding from Engineer Lip is that if we approve tonight, um, the city will be ready to submit the application for this loan later, this week. And the work will start, uh, as soon as June, uh, on this acceleration. So we've been doing maybe 270 lead service line replacements, um, every year. We're required under our consent order to do about only 150. This would bump that up to closer to 330 or 340 um, for the next couple of years to get us all the way to removal. So, I'm just really excited about this. I think it's a great proposal. Um, we did recognize in committee that, you know, Malden hasn't paid for all this over, in the past, and some ho- homeowners have really had to pay, um, some money, uh, to remove their lead lines, which, of course, benefits everyone. There's no safe amount of lead. We have required for some time that homes, when they turn over, so when they're sold, they have to remove all lead lines, so it's a part of that sale. Um, we've also required that rentals not have lead service lines, although we haven't really had the mechanism to enforce that historically. So this really gets us as far as we need to go. Um, and, uh, and I am ready to make a motion to approve, uh, whenever the time is right. If, uh, holding until my colleagues wanna comment as they'd like. Thank you.
Uh, we have a, a, a motion and a second. We're gonna have some discussion. I would like to, before I go to Counsel Winslow, um, I would like to be added as a sponsor, and I was wondering if the entire council would like to be added as a sponsor?
Great idea.
Okay. Um, great. So Counsel Winslow.
No, this is fantastic. You know, when I ran for council back in 2017, um, you know, I think we had, it's like 3,500 lines, and it was asking the question, um, of like, I mean, that's gonna take us 20 or 30 years to get to all the lines we were at the pace we were going. So the fact that we're speeding this up, and I appreciate, uh, City Engineer, uh, Lip to, to take this on, and, and the whole council. We've been doing whatever we can to, um, add resources and, um, and make sure that program geared, you know, ramps up in the appropriate way. So that's fantastic. I mean, one of the things that I just wanna emphasize, I asked in, um, committee was, this is really kind of more of a line of credit. So there, there are potentially federal grants and other type of things. So, so if we get those grants, we may not have to borrow all this money, but this will make sure that we have in a place to program to, to get those 2,700 lines done, uh, however that works. And if we can get access to, uh, um, the other grants, either at state or federal level, um, we, we, we will not have to spend that money and borrow it. But, um, this is a great thing. And I think there's also some potential that there might be some reimbursement at the end, so we might even get, you know, at least 50% out of this. So I think there's, um, this is a great program. Let's just carry forward the momentum we have, get rid of all these lead lines and, uh, and, but also have the flexibility to use grant money as we get that. So, thank you very much, all in favor of this.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Any other comments? Great. Thank you to, to the administration and, and the City Engineer for your hard work on this. Looking forward to getting rid of these lead pipes. Um, on Counsel McDonald's motion to approve, adopt this, uh, order, seconded by Counsel Semenelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora. Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. Yes. Sorry.
Thank you.
Whoops. Uh, multitasking. Still trying to figure out the IT stuff. Um, I saw the comment on YouTube. Next order of business.
Paper 169-25, Order That $3,507,500 Is Appropriated To Pay Costs Of Designing, Reconstructing, And Constructing Water Manes, Including The Payment Of All Costs Incidental And Related There Too. And to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter 44, Section 8.5, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the city therefore. All or any portions of this amount may be borrowed through the Massachusetts Water Resources Authorities Local Water System Assistance Program, and the Mayor and any other appropriate officials of the city are authorized to execute and deliver any agreements or other documents in connection therewith. Paper 170-25, Order That $1,500,000 Is Appropriated From Available Water Sewer Retained- Paper 170-25, order that one million five hundred thousand dollars is appropriated from available water sewer retain, retained earnings to pay costs of designing, reconstructing, and constructing water mains, all association, all associated roadwork, and including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Council President. So these two papers cover our ongoing regular maintenance of our water infrastructure, including water mains. And this is in part a, the standard kind of loan that we get from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority that we've been doing for years. It's a pretty standard practice for municipalities. And then the order to appropriate retained earnings is, is from the Water Sewer Enterprise Reserve. That's, I think about half of the reserve, something like that, that we felt we could spend. So we, we took as much cash as we felt like we could spend to stay on the schedule that we've been on, and then continue to, and then borrowed the remainder that we need for the next about three years of work. And the piece that I just want to highlight for our residents who might be watching this very entertaining city council meeting tonight is that the amount of money that we've saved from water that had been leaking from our aging infrastructure and pipes over this, over the last couple of years in this kind of work, has been, I think in the millions of dollars, is what we said in committee, over a course of a couple of years. I'm looking at YEM to see if that, if that holds up, yeah. So we, we look at the amount of water that is metered from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, and then how much we collect money for, and the water that gets lost in the middle is leaking out someplace. And so it is really an, an efficiency and financial investment in our infrastructure to make sure that we have pipes that are not leaking the water. And so this just keeps us on track with our current schedule of maintenance and repairs and replacements, based on what we think is prudent, based on the balance in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Thank you. Any motions?
I make a motion to adopt these two orders.
On, on Counselor McDonald's motion to adopt both orders, both 169-25 and 170-25. I heard two over here, so we'll give 169-25 to Condon and 170-25 to Counselor Cologne Hayes. Should we take these up separately, or is everyone okay with?
The same thing.
Okay, 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 we're gonna take this up together. On, on that motion, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Is giving a thumbs up. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Council President O'Malley.
Yes, both of those are adopted, or, yeah. Next order of business.
Paper 174-25, order, the city of Malden, the city of Malden filed with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a consolidated plan including applications for grants under the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, as amended, and the Cranston Gonzales Act of nineteen ninety, as amended, to be administered by the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, including all understanding and assurances contained therein on or substantially in the form presented to this, to this meeting, and that Gary Christensen, mayor and chief executive officer of the city of Malden, be and hereby is directed and designated as the authorized representative for, and in this, in the name and behalf of the city of Malden, to sign and file said plan, to act in connection with said plan, and to provide such additional information as may be required.
So before we take any, up any discussion, I'm gonna go to Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm actually going to recuse myself from this vote, especially for, well, the public services, if you take it in one, than for everything. I am a paid employee for one of the organizations. I don't get paid out of it, but it does fund my organization.
If you'd like to, I, I personally think you can recuse yourself without a vote, but you're, well, we can take a vote if you'd like. All those in favor to let, to allow Counselor Crowe to recuse?
You gotta do the roll call.
We will take. Oh, and. Counselor Spatafora, you're also making a motion to recuse yourself?
I was gonna make it for the both of us.
And.
Yes, yes, yes.
We're on the board of the Malden Teen and Richmond Center.
Okay, and Counselor Sika, could you just say that one more time?
Counselor Spatafora and myself sit on the board of the Malden Teen and Richmond Center, so we would like to recuse ourselves from this vote as well.
Great, we're gonna take up three accruesals. Personally, I think that y'all are always able to recuse yourself without a vote, but we'll take it up just in case. But if we ever didn't vote and you still wanted to recuse yourself, you're welcome to leave the room, because we don't want to make you violate the law. So with that, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Thumbs up. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Council President O'Malley.
Yes. Counselor Spatafora, Counselor Crowe, and Counselor Sika are recused from this vote. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Counselor Spatafora, if you could shut your camera off for now and go away from the computer, that would be really helpful. Thank you. Elvis has left the building. So with that, Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. On that law-abiding note, as folks know, every year we approve the budget for the community development block grants. These are direct federal grants that come to the city on a formula basis, and we get to decide how to use within certain parameters. They have to particularly go to low-income neighborhoods. And part of what we learned this year is that the number of neighborhoods that qualify in Malden is actually going up because the area median income, like the average income for a family in the Boston area is going up so fast that more and more of our neighborhoods are falling into that category of less, of like more than half. It's more than half of the residents of the neighborhood have to be under eighty percent AMI. Is that correct? Yeah, I'm looking at it. We have Alex Pratt and Jane from our strategic planning and community development team who are here to answer any questions. And so we have, so anyways, so more of our neighborhoods qualify, which is certainly a mixed blessing for us. The budget that we have from the administration is very similar to past years. The good news is that at the moment, we're projecting flat funding. This is not a discretionary grant at the federal level, though we did talk about that, I'll come back to that. And so that means that we're funding a lot of the same priorities as last year. We've pulled back in some places where there's already an unspent balance, like in housing rehab and pedestrian improvements that, so we have enough kind of ready to spend. And then we have shifted the, the park projects that are funded as others are completed in cycle off. So up for next year will be Phase Two of Dever Park, Butch Genetti Park on Pearl Street, and a placeholder for potential investment in Roosevelt Park as well. And we, the piece about the potential for changes in the federal formula is that we don't know what to expect, of course, around any federal funds, and many federal distributions are being cut. And so while there is strong support for this program in Congress, and we don't have any signs or indication that the money would be cut, what we asked of our OSPCD staff is that if there's a, so the budget has to include a set of contingencies of how you deal with small changes in, in the amount that you actually get. But if it's more than a ten percent change to what we've approved today, so in a two-million-dollar budget, that would be more than two-hundred thousand dollars off. We had asked that they come, so that's a material change. We asked that they come back and talk to us about the plan is for addressing those changes, and they agreed to do that. So with that, I'm happy to make the appropriate motion when we're ready, for the eight of us to vote on this budget.
Second.
On Counselor McDonald's motion to adopt the order seconded by Counselor Seminelli, is there any discussion? Seeing none, a yes vote will adopt the order, a no vote will not adopt the order. We're gonna still take a roll call, even though Counselor Spatafora is not voting. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Council President O'Malley.
Yes, that is adopted eight to zero. Counselor Seminelli would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just want to just comment on the, you know, Strategic Planning and Development Committee and the hard work they've done with the Community Development Block Grant. And, you know, we just saw it a little bit a couple of days ago in my neighborhood on the Carested Park opening. I know it was long overdue, it was like Willy Wonka's park, nobody ever really thought it was gonna finally open. But it really turned out to be a beautiful day. The Carested family was there, Strategic Planning, the mayor's office did a really nice job. Some of my colleagues were there as well, and, you know, if you ever wonder on where this type of money is going and how it's going to the places that it's going, take a ride through Route sixty on the corner of Short and Route sixty at Carested Park and see. I mean, I drove by there today on my way in here to council, and there had to be a hundred-and-fifty people. People were actually playing organized games on the field, you know, kids were in the tarp lot. I mean, it was just great to see all the people. I know my colleague, Counselor Sika, had said she had driven by there this morning and saw the same amount of kids there. So this program don't get enough credit. The people that dot the i's and cross the t's are sitting out there in the audience today to make sure that, you know, we have these programs and that we have these park rehabilitations going on in our districts. And a perfect example of that is what happened this past week. We have another memorial on May ninth coming, which should be a, a, a very good event. But again, you know, I've been lucky as a city councilor for the tenure that I've been up here to renovate five parks in my neighborhood. And, you know, it was all done with the help from the Strategic Planning and Development, along with the mayor's office that, you know, have the final write-off on it. So, you know, like I said, you know, you, if you want to really see where your money's being spent, you know, take a ride down there, or Lincoln Commons for that matter, and you can see where that money goes. So I just wanted to say that I'm all for this, and I want to thank you guys for all the hard work that you do throughout the year. You know, you give us, you give us city councils the credit because they're in our districts, and we really love that. But at the end of the day, we couldn't do it without you guys, so thank you very much for all your help. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Counselor Seminelli. We now, our next order of business is executive session. Paper two-two-two-twenty-five.
Order, the city council will vote whether to go into executive session with legal counsel in accordance with Exemption One, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A one, and Exemption Seven, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, specifically to comply with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-three B, to act on the pending open meeting law complaint filed by J.D. and Sika of twelve Cleveland Street on February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five against the city council related to the February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five duly posted executive session on the matter of benevolent botanicals and nine-twenty-six Eastern Avenue versus the city of Malden, where such discussion in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the city. Roll call required.
Thank you. And with that, if Counselor Spatafora, if you, if you want to come back, you're welcome to, no pressure though. We will, I see Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I just want to do personal privilege before we.
Okay, you're gonna be first in personal privilege. Is there a motion, is there a motion to go into executive section, session on Counsel, on Counselor Sika, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, to go into executive session? The clerk will call the roll, please.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Sika.
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Thumbs up.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Council President O'Malley.
Yes, we will go into executive session. So here's the thing, I have to read some more things. Citing Exemption Three on MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, we're in discussing Paper two-two-two-twenty-five. In open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the city's litigating position. On Counselor Sika's motion seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, the clerk called the roll, it was unanimous. The council will enter executive session, and again, the council will now enter executive session. The body will not reconvene for any further business this evening, and will adjourn directly from executive session. With that, we're gonna go to personal privilege because the docket is clear. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I just want to remind folks, on Monday, next Monday, May fifth, six-thirty P.M. at the Salemwood School, I am holding a Ward Six committee meeting. One focus will be on a proposal for some conceptual bus shelters that we, I want to really discuss with the community, so that's one part. And then Chief Cronin will be also there talking about community safety in the Maplewood area. So just to encourage anybody, councillors as well, to come out. That is, the MBTA has money for more bus shelters, particularly the routes that are gonna be impacted along Salem Street. And in, you know, in Ward Seven, there's opportunities for better bus shelters, and this is an opportunity that, I say, it comes only, very rarely to look at adding bus shelters, maybe shifting some bus stops around. So please come out and see what's, some of the ideas are, and let's get community input so we can make sure that, as the MBTA contemplates some changes, that we as community are ready to give our input into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to let everybody know that we did have the first youth summit, the Malden Youth Council Summit, last week. It went great. I want to thank the councillors that showed up to that. The youth did a great job explaining what they've done in the past year, and also about why they joined and trying to get other youth in the city to apply, and the applications will be open soon. So thank you for that. We also had, oh, I just want to announce the Fuji Friends of Oak Grove Vigs Plant Swap at Coeur d'Moilie Park this Saturday, rain or shine, ten-thirty to twelve-thirty, and you just swap plants. It's dig anything up that you have too much of in your yard, split them, bring them, and you always go home with some new plants. And it's how actually I have had everything in my yard, I think I've gotten from a plant swap over the past fifteen years, so you should come. And then also there is the Malden Pride Ride, which is May fourth, and that's from twelve to two, meeting at Cambridge Health Alliance, the Bike Kitchen. And I should note that the plant swap is Fuji and Malden Pride and Malden Grows in collaboration, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who came to the Green Malden Fair last weekend, which was great. This is the third year that we've done it, and so it was a great set of community organizations and opportunities. If you didn't go, you can still sign up for some of our programs like Curbside Compost Pickup, which is weekly pickup for commercial compost for only fifteen dollars, about fifteen, sixteen bucks a month. It's a, it's a great deal, and it helps reduce your trash. You can upgrade your electricity supply to Malden one hundred, which was one hundred percent renewable electricity, for a rate that is still less than the standard national grid rate right now, so we encourage people to do that. You can do that at maldencommunityelectricity.org, and sign up for any of our other, you know, home, home improvement kinds of loans that you may qualify for, and you can find those on the city website. So thank you to Becca McFeeters and the planning team in particular for, for that. That was great. And then I just wanted to do a shout-out to everyone. Ward Five Community Yard Sale that Counselor Taylor had initiated, and lots of folks participated in last weekend. It was, it was a great opportunity to get the neighborhood out. Finally, I just want to let you all know, our good friends Alex and Jane have left us with MAP. with maps of the income neighborhoods, like the, they're, they're color-coded maps about the income, like thresholds in different neighborhoods in Malden, that we saw in committee and everybody was excited about. So you can apparently also get this online at the City of Malden website, at citymalden.org/plans, or you can just pick up a very large paper copy right here.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll announce this again next week, but school committee member Michael Drumming and I will be hosting the annual Mother's Day breakfast, on Mother's Day, Sunday, May 11, from 9:30 to 11:30 at Anthony's on Canal Street. So come on down and enjoy a delicious breakfast and celebrate moms, sisters, aunts, and all the important women in your life. So I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hate to beat a dead horse, but again, I just wanna remind everybody that May 9, which is a Friday at 4 o'clock, we will be doing a memorial service for Jimmy Tello, who lived in the neighborhood at the field at Carested Park. We hope to have a baseball theme with steamed hot dogs, popcorn, snow cone machine, and be giving out all kinds of little novelties. And, no dunk tank this time on this one, not, not at this one. We'll get one for you, though. We'll hope for the foot when you win one. And the other thing, too, was, you know, I know it's early, but, you know, I plan on making this 4th of July for Ward 7 the biggest 4th of July it's ever seen. So anybody that wants to get involved with the 4th of July event, please don't hesitate, give me a call. We can always use some good people, and if you got any good ideas and thoughts, give me a call. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Simonelli, Counsel Sika. And then Counsel Spatafora, we'll go to you if you wanna, if you, actually, Counsel, no, you're good, okay.
Can we hear? We're just gonna let him talk to the TV.
To the public, yeah, to the public.
Well, anyway, thank you, Council President. I can't believe it's May 1, May 1 this Thursday. I feel like we just celebrated New Year's Eve, for crying out loud. So like Counsel Simonelli, I am hard at work preparing for our annual 4th of July celebration at Linden. My basement is proof that I can barely walk down it. I have, I've been so nervous with these tariffs that I've been buying things for months. So I have bicycles and toys and you name it, it's in my basement. My husband's going to kill me, so hopefully July 4 will be here just as soon as May 1 just came. But I wanted to invite everybody, I'm sure most of you have seen on social media, that Counsel Spatafora, myself, and the Friends of the Malden Teen and Richmond Center, hosting our first, hopefully, annual pocketbook bingo at Anthony's of Malden on Friday, May 16. We have sold about 325 tickets, which means there's only 75 tickets left for this event. We are capped at 400 tickets, so if you wanna come and join us, it's your chance to win 10 designer handbags, and we're gonna be raffling off, you know, a Louis Vuitton and a Gucci, and it's gonna be an amazing, fun-filled evening. Master of Ceremonies for the evening is none other than Kenny Kelly from Big Brother 26. He is so excited and looking forward to being our emcee for the evening. So if you have nothing to do on May 16, the tickets are $45. You can mail a check to the Friends of the Malden Teen and Richmond Center to, hold on, PO Box 515 in Malden, Mass. 02148. Or you can send Venmo to the Malden Teen Center Venmo account. They're $45. Men are welcome, it is not just a woman's thing. We may have a few fun prizes for the gentlemen that do come as well. And then the following day, it's Go Big or Go Home that weekend, is Craig and I's Annual Fish and Derby, Saturday morning, May 17. Registration will be going live probably by the end of the week. We have a final meeting this Wednesday afternoon to discuss last-minute details, but make sure that you get your kids signed up for Fish and Derby, because it's sure to be a blast, as always. Thank you.
The, the pocketbooks, you also have to worry about the tariffs.
Yeah.
That's the real one. With that, we're gonna go to Counsel Wenslow for a second time.
I'm sorry, I forgot. On May 17, we're gonna have our Fourth Annual Maplewood Fest, 12 to 3 in Maplewood Square, having bands, food, and fun, so come on out for that. Thank you.
And from the chair, I would like to announce that we are still moving forward with our Spot Palm Brook Greenway Plan. I do want to thank Counsel Crowe, Counsel Spatafora for their great feedback, the business community, the administration. Ron Hogan has been really helpful in terms of shepherding this OSPCD. We will be doing a public, another public engagement meeting on May 15, it's a Thursday, at 5:30. I'm realizing that that is also at the same time as our Climate Action and Sustainability Meeting, that will be happening in the same building. So, you know, we can, we can, you can go to both, you can find out what we're doing when it comes to climate action, you can come and find out where we're at with the Spot Palm Brook Greenway. Again, I do wanna thank everyone who's been involved. The, the product that we have because of your involvement has been, is making it just better with that. I do wanna thank, you know, OSPCD for working years in the making to get construction funding on the Massachusetts TIP Transportation Improvement Plan. You know, it is a long-term plan, so we're not talking about until, you know, a federal fiscal year 2029, and so, which is actually 2028, but I just wanna thank everyone for that. So again, May 15 at 5:30, the next Spot Palm Brook Greenway engagement. And with that, I don't see any other lights, we're gonna go into executive session. Thank you.